I'd like to call meeting to order. It doesn't mean due to the snowstorm. We've rescheduled. Thank you for everybody for making this time available. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. The first thing on the agenda was the public hearing. This public hearing is for the resolution to amend the parking restrictions from East Line curb line of Montgomery Street sixty to a point sixty feet there up. So basically along, so basically along the Terrapin side up to their parking lot. I'll redo the, I'll reread the resolution. Whereas the following amendment to chapter 109 Vehicle and Traffic Code was introduced by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck on February fourteenth, 2023. Whereas a public hearing was to be held on March fourteenth, now March sixteenth, 2023 at two thirty at the Village Hall, 76th March Street, New York. Notice of said hearing duly published, and in which time all interested parties had an opportunity to be heard. And whereas the Public Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck determined this action to be type-two action based on the criteria found in its six, New York C R R, whereas six one seven five twenty-two thirty-three, and therefore has determined that there are no adverse environmental impacts associated with the adoption of this local law. Now, therefore being enacted, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reinbeck for the following for village law, local law number one, 2023, Village and Traffic Resolution Amendments, name a street, Livingston Street on the north side from the east curb line of Montgomery Street to a point sixty feet there up. Make a motion to open up for public comment.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to open up for a public hearing at the same time.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody with public comment?
Can you guys read word that? You don't need both. I just need you to open the public hearing, which allows for public comments, so.
I'll amend it to say make a motion to open the public hearing, which allows for public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's my second?
Second.
Thank you.
Eleanor.
Just can you briefly?
Eleanor, can you come up, please, and introduce yourself?
I just have a question. Oh, I was actually going to clarify this given one of the comments that came in. This is only at the moment from Terrapin's parking lot entrance to Route nine, there's no parking allowed. This is to lift that restriction to allow for, we think, up to three parking spaces. This has nothing to do with the permit parking on Livingston Street, which is past Terrapin.
Is that your question, Eleanor?
Yeah, I just wanted to roughly understand what you mean.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I appreciate forward in the definition.
No, I have no, I'm not, just curious.
Well, sometimes planning process is a little better.
I'd like to close the public comment section. And close the public hearing and ask for the board to vote to approve. I'd like a motion to approve the resolution, whatever number, 2023, that removes the parking restriction on Livingston Street as shown notice.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So pass. Thank you all.
It was the easiest public hearing and resolution I think I've ever had.
Okay, on the agenda, we have no presentations.
Unless Eleanor has something, huh?
Yeah.
Public comment?
No, I don't have a question.
We're not to public comment yet. I'd like some presentation.
I know, I was making a presentation.
All right. Next again is public comment. Is there any public comment? Eleanor.
Eleanor Pupko, Village Green. We've had a discussion at a recent C B C meeting about speed limits. And so some people were saying that speed limits were enforced and other people said they weren't. So what I did was I got all the police reports I could find for 2022. That is, there were eleven months, I couldn't find April. There were one hundred and forty-seven speeding tickets issued, seventy-six on East Market, sixty-one on Mill, eight on Springbrook Ave, one on Goldwood, and then one on River Road, but I don't know why that would be in there. So I just wanted to bring this forward so people could understand, you know, what the issues are, because I know we're talking about some traffic calming, you know, ideas. And I'm just wondering if the speed limit would really be a reasonable way to start so we can look at either enforcing the speed limit or maybe coming up with some methods that don't require enforcement. And that might be a long term. It might save us money, even if it might cost a little bit more originally. So that was kind of basically, I just wanted to bring out that information so people, you know, have the data so they can make a good decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor. By the way, I got updated numbers for you. I was going to share that with you for all twelve months. So I'll share that with you at some point, but.
Heard it. Any other comments? We can send them, we're going to move on. Treasurers' report.
Okay, treasurer's report is for the period ending February twenty-eighth. The general fund ended the month with two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Water fund ended the month with one hundred and fifty-three, fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-one cents. And the sewer fund ended the month with one hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five cents. And our New York class, between the general water and sewer, we are in the four point three seven percent that compounds daily, so we are in seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars that month for all of those. And while we're on that subject, I wanted to just clarify that I have received, I have received communication from M and T Bank and both New York class, just reassuring that our funds are safe. And I just wanted to read this from New York class, because they are a government investment pool, that the New York class did not have any direct exposure to any failed banks, nor did they have any financial relationships with any of the failed banks. And their exposures within the F D I C insurance coverage and fully collateralized. The failed banks generally operated in a different banking sector than traditional banks, and as a result, we believe that based on credit fundamentals, the risk should not be systemic. New York class deposit, cash deposits are fully collateralized and maintained with a diverse group of financial institutions. Our disciplined investment process continually evaluates the strength and capitalization of our U S money center and regional counterparties, and indicates asset quality is strong, net interest margins are robust, and funding is solid in the fixed income markets. So as we have, have several of our funds invested there, I just wanted to read that to the board.
Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome. So moving on, vouchers presented for payment in the general fund total one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine forty-three oh eight. In the water fund, ninety-seven thousand, six forty-one twenty-one. The sewer fund, forty-one thousand, seven forty-three ninety-four. The water plant upgrades, forty-one thousand, two thirteen seventy-five. And escrow bills in the total ten thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. An operating statement is provided with revenue expenditures through March fourteenth. Budget, the department budget meetings have been held on Tuesday, February twenty-first for highway police and court, Thursday, February twenty-third for water and sewer, Wednesday, March eighth for fire, environmental, building, planning, and zoning, and the general fund and front office. And Wednesday, the fifteenth, yesterday, for the total budget. And yet to be held will be Tuesday, April eleventh, will be the public hearing at the regular monthly meeting. I have no adjustments for water and sewer, however, I did want to report that we have a hundred and twenty-eight signed up for auto pay and a hundred and nineteen signed up for e-bills.
Cool.
And I, kudos to Chrissy, she's not here, but she's really just been helping our residents and our users get all set up.
I'd like to also comment on the budget since we will be releasing the budget to the clerk on the twentieth, and it will be available to the public after it's been released to the clerk. Copies will be available online, as well, they can be picked up here at the call in the village clerk's office after the call.
I just have four budget amendments to do. For the planning capital, the comprehensive plan, this is just to allocate the ten thousand dollar grant to that line item from the revenue line item. And also in police equipment, thirty thousand dollars for the body cameras, the police received a grant for that, and my budget amendment is to allocate that revenue to that expense account.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good. That's all we have? That's all we got? Cool. Thank you.
All right. I'm sure everybody saw we made a change in our, in our resolutions. We had three resolutions that were going to be on the agenda today, which are dealing with benefit time adjustments for our union and non-union members and the superintendent of public works. I'm reserving them because we have not closed out the discussion with the union due to the snowstorm and people being away. They have not been able to finalize that, and I'm going to finalize that with the union before we go forward, so they will be pushed to next month's meeting agenda. So those three items are off and new agenda has was published. So the first thing on the agenda is the volunteer firefighter EMS village tax exemption. I don't know if many of you have been following what's going on. The state passed this in December with, with guidelines for municipalities, not only municipalities, but, you know, which include village, town, cities, counties, and school to pass amendments to give our volunteer firefighter EMS a break on the taxes associated with what we charge them for taxes. So this is a resolution, which will be numbered, is to establish date for a public hearing, which will be next month on April eleventh, to adopt, for adoption by the village board of the Village of Reinbeck for local law number two of 2023, amending chapter 101 of the code of the Village of Reinbeck regarding property tax exemption for firefighters and ambulance workers. I can read through all this, but where, I will, I will, because I think this is important. Whereas pursuant to real property tax, such in forty sixty, four sixty-six A, the Village of Reinbeck is authorized to grant certain exemptions to local, by local officer with respect to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers as defined therein. And whereas proposed by the form of local law number two of 2023 entitled the local law to amend chapter 101 of the code of Village of Reinbeck entitled taxation, by enacting a new article four regarding a property tax exemption for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers pursuant to section four sixty-six A of the real property tax law that has been submitted to the village board and the Village of Reinbeck. Whereas the proposed law would amend the village code of the Village of Reinbeck to exercise the village right pursuant to section four sixty-six A of the real property tax law to enact legislation that will exempt up to ten percent of the assessed value of the real property owned by an enrolled member of an incorporated volunteer fire company, department, or volunteer ambulance server who has served a minimum number of years. And whereas the village board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as a local legislative decision concerning routine administration and management and type-two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, C C R. Therefore, being resolved, the village board of the Village of Reinbeck by favorable vote of not less than a majority of all the members of the board as follows. The village board of the Village of Reinbeck shall hold a public hearing on April eleventh at six P M. to hear all interested parties of the proposed local law. And the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish notice of said public hearing in the Kings and Freeman of the official newspaper of said village on or before, ten, there's a date, I know, some date, ten days prior to?
Yes, but I'll, I'll.
Yeah. Which is not less than five, notice of not less than five calendar days prior to the date set of the public hearing. Okay. So there are eligibility requirements in this, and I'll go over those too. But the exemption is ten percent of the assessed value of the property owned by an enrolled member as set forth below. As such enrolled member and their spouses then hereby granted from taxation with respect to the real property tax of the Village of Reinbeck as long as eligibility requirements are met. The eligibility requirements are, that such exemption shall be granted to an enrolled incorporated of an incorporated fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service, provided that, A, the property is owned by a volunteer firefighter or a volunteer ambulance worker; B, the property is a primary residence of the volunteer firefighter or volunteer ambulance worker; the property is used exclusively for residential purposes; D, the volunteer firefighter or volunteer ambulance worker resides in the Village of Reinbeck, and the Village of Reinbeck is served by such incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or incorporated voluntary ambulance service; E, the volunteer firefighter or fire, or volunteer ambulance worker is certified by the authority having jurisdiction as an enrolled member of such an incorporated volunteer fire company or fire department, et cetera. And the volunteer firefighter or volunteer ambulance worker meets a minimum service requirement that established by the Village of Reinbeck, which is hereby established, and I put in a number of three years. And I put that number in because that's what the county has done, and that's what other local municipalities have done. We can choose anywhere from two to five. That's an option that we have to make. I'm proposing three, only because it's in line with everybody else. So there is some work that needs to be done. You know, the volunteer firefighter and ambulance must annually, on or before the application tax and status date, file an application of such property tax exemption with the assessor responsible for preparing the assessment role of Village of Reinbeck on a form as prescribed by the New York State Commissioner of Taxation and Finance. And the Village of Reinbeck must maintain written guidelines available upon request as to requirements on enrolled volunteer member relating to this exemption. There's some other grants here. The Village of Reinbeck was annually filed with the assessor prior to applicable tax status date, the list of the active volunteer member who is certified to meet the minimum service requirement, such this must provide as to applicable tax and status date the number of years of service served by each enrolled member and such enrolled member's address and residence. The applicant who is receiving any benefit pursuant to article four of the real property tax as of the effective date of his article shall not have any of those benefits diminished because of this article. And there's optional provisions, which we can also choose. Optional provisions to be considered by the board during approval as grant of lifetime exemption, as is any eligible, any eligible enrolled member who accrues more than twenty years of active volunteer service as certified by the Village of Reinbeck, should be granted a ten percent exemption as authorized by the article for the remainder of his or her life as long as his or her primary residence is located within the Village of Reinbeck. First one. Second one. Unmarried spouse of an enrolled member killed in the line of duty. An unmarried spouse, an unmarried surviving spouse of a deceased enrolled member killed in the line of duty as certified by the Village of Reinbeck is qualified to continue to receive the exemption as long as this deceased volunteer has been an enrolled member for at least five years and been receiving exemption at the time of his death. Different, because they need to be enrolled for five years. Only question.
Actually, we need to clarify, this is for the unremarried spouse of the enrolled member.
That's why I said when I announced it, but, okay, okay.
Well, it wasn't clear.
And then the next one is the unmarried married spouse of a deceased enrolled member. So a unmarried surviving spouse of deceased member as certified by the Village of Reinbeck is qualified to continue to receive the exemption as long as the deceased volunteer has been a enrolled member for at least twenty years, and the deceased volunteer and unmarried spouse have been receiving the exemption at the time of his or her death. Okay? All right. So we, we have some decisions to make. The first one is years of service. All right. And I made.
Are we, are we making those decisions now, or are we?
No, we should make those decisions now, because that's for the public hearing, and that's what we go forward with.
Okay.
You already have a public hearing on April eleventh at six P M.
Pardon?
You already have a public hearing on April eleventh at six P M.
We do it for the budget.
For the budget?
Correct.
There's usually not, take that.
Regardless, I can't post at a undisclosed time, because.
I think we do both.
Can't we have both start at six and?
Yeah.
Just have them be concurrent to each other? Can we do this from five thirty?
Yeah.
And my only question, my, my only comment is that I'd like to get this in early so we have it in place for the next year.
And I'm pretty sure you need to post an actual time, not a possible time. So I need to, you can do that same day.
So six, so six thirty is what you're saying?
Yeah.
So we'll do the first one, the budget at six, and then we'll do this one at six thirty. That work?
That works.
Work everybody?
And we can do business on each way.
Yeah.
Thank you. Gary, I have like a, a simple question, which is, when we say active or enrolled or that we're certifying them, do we have a definition of enrolled? Like, do they have to?
Yes.
Report to a call at least once a year?
The firehouse maintains, and I don't have that listing with me, but the firehouse maintains what you have to be for active, which is a stringent requirement that they maintain.
Okay.
So we have that definition, and we can bring that forward.
And I think also I want to just mention that Gary and Karen did the math on this, and if all, like nine, nine?
I didn't really listen to it, but yeah, we're looking at.
It's nine, nine people who live in the village who would certainly, who would currently benefit it. I'm one of them, so I'm going to recuse myself from all these conversations. And it would cost the village, so it'd be like twenty-two hundred dollars if all nine of them took advantage of this. So just so you all know, the cost benefit, or at least the cost was calculated.
It's going to be.
So I have a, what's the definition, definition of spouse in New York State? Because I don't know. If, I want to make sure that civil unions would be covered by this. Civil union parkers would be considered a spouse, or is that an old fashioned word that doesn't?
I agree with your question, I don't know. This is the, I can clarify that.
I mean, I really don't know.
This is based off of the model law that was released by?
The state.
The state? So like, I would imagine that this.
That's what I would think, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Good, good question. Good question. So I want to get back to the three years, the two to five. Is the board okay with three years of being an active?
Be consistent?
Yeah.
That's a sensible number.
All right. And then in regard to the additional provisions, the grant of the lifetime exemption, exemption for twenty years as an active, active firefighter, is the board okay with that exemption?
I'm okay with that exemption.
And we take a vote in the end. If you have, so, and the unmarried spouse of the enrolled member killed in the line of duty, any, any objection?
And we want to include domestic partners.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that.
If it's not included by the definition.
And the last one, the unmarried spouse of a deceased enrolled member.
Okay.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept those amendments as presented for this local law.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Therefore, we'll move on to the resolution, which is to establish a date for a public hearing regarding adoption of village board of the Village of Reinbeck of local law number two as proposed in the 2023, amending chapter one twenty-six of the code of Village of Reinbeck regarding property tax exemption for firefighters and ambulance workers.
Is it one twenty-six or one oh one?
Pardon?
I forget this one.
Let me check that. I think it's, we'll verify. So all in favor of adopting a resolution to afford a published date, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
What?
And then the next one, the next would be the resolution.
Sir, hold on.
Oh.
Published date, wait, what?
April eleventh.
Is the public hearing?
It's going to be the public hearing at six thirty.
What, did you just vote off?
So it will be to establish the date for the public hearing of April eleventh.
Correct.
Six thirty. Okay?
Six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Sorry. Budget at six.
Budget six. Okay. Done.
Who seconded?
I agreed it. All in favor say aye.
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 Let me see.
Thank you.
Okay. Next order of business is non-union employee performance evaluations. I sent all this information to all of you earlier, just for the public, to kind of put this in perspective. In our current code, let me pull up here a second. All of our staff here in the Village of Reinbeck are tied to the union negotiation by the U P S E U. That staff has no say in that contract negotiation, but they've been tied to it in regard to primarily compensation ever, ever since that's been adopted by that article. Get to that in a second. So after review with our legal, which is N I C O M, a municipality may initiate a performance evaluation program for non, for non-union employees pursuant to a local law if their established identified guidelines that are fixed prior to the performance of which employees are then made aware of. Right? The payments may be considered as an inducement to continue and pay for municipal service and would discourage unnecessary absenteeism. All right. So by law, we can do this. We can set that apart from our union. We don't have to be, they do not have to be tied to the union. And in our code, section A dash one twenty-four is the article that connects everyone to be tied to the collective bargaining agreement that we currently have. So what this does, this resolution, and there's two resolutions here, sets, changes article, changes that article one twenty-four to amend it to allow for non-union representation. Okay? And I'll read that resolution as resolution number one, be resolved in article one of the village code entitled benefits and leave and retirement shall be revised as set forth below. The purpose of this regulation is to establish uniform positions for benefits applicable to the full-time, non-union village employees holding the following titles, village clerk, treasurer, deputy clerk, court clerk, police clerk, superintendent of public work, building and planning secretary, and planning and zoning board, building and planning clerks. Okay? As used in this chapter, the following terms shall have a meaningful as indicated, full-time non-union employee, an employee that is not otherwise covered by a collective bargaining agreement, who is employed on a regular basis by the week, should consist of either a work week of thirty-five hours or forty hours as designated. And the benefits, personal time, overtime, paid vacation, sick leave, bereavement, longevity, membership and employee health insurance program, retirement system, holidays, jury duty, and compensation time benefits shall be available to those full-time, non-union employees as identified in section A one twenty-four one as described in three through fourteen. Bottom line is, we're breaking, we're keeping the good parts of the U P S E U contract, because we don't want to have separate vacation schedules, separate medical insurance, separate benefit times, separate personal time. We want to keep that consistent from a management point of view for here in the village. But one change we are changing, and I'm recommending, I'm asking for the board to approve, is to change that regards to comp time. And that's such in A one twenty-four thirteen, which is compensatory time. For full-time, non-union employees may accumulate up to forty hours of compensatory time per calendar year. Such compensatory time shall not be carried over to the next year. All compensatory time should be paid out at a rate of one and a half of the employee's current rate of pay. So this, this differs from the current U P S E U contract, which allows them to carry over forty hours. This terminates the ability for the village staff to carry over any of their comp time to use it up in that calendar year.
I just have a question. Calendar year or festival year? Oh, God.
Currently for the U P S E U, it's based on the calendar year.
Okay.
I'm just asking because any unused time I have to account for as a liability at May thirty-first, so I needed to know if that use-up time was counted.
This says per calendar year.
What would be easier? It doesn't matter, you just need to know?
I just need to know.
Or when is it awarded?
What? What was your question?
It's awarded when they.
It's awarded.
It's awarded when they, okay, great. I'm thinking of vacation time.
I hear a question.
She asked when it's awarded.
Yep. It's awarded at any time.
Okay. Okay.
That was her question.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to accept resolution number one as here entered into this meeting.
Second.
Discussion.
Why are we treating them differently than the union?
You only, for comp, for.
Carryover.
For compensatory time.
It's just carryover, right?
Yeah, carryover. Come in.
Because honestly, we're trying to get rid of that with the union. Because honestly, we're trying to get rid of that with the union.
Well, that's what I figured you were.
Yeah, we're, we're working towards that. If you look at what other municipalities around are doing, a lot of them are more restrictive on comp time. The direction that we've been going, we changed even in the last contract, the amount of time that it could carry over. This is just one step.
Yeah, we did. We narrowed it, yeah, right.
Yeah. So that's why.
It's a complaint against people just hoarding that up and then being gone for a year.
It's a budget, it's a difficult budget issue, and, but, I don't know. I think, I think we should change the union contract first and then do this.
Well, that's not until December 31st.
Well.
We can change this now and then.
Potato, totto.
Yeah, but we don't know if we can get it. The union might
Might.
They might.
Come back and say no.
But we don't have to be the same in this item. We're separating.
No, I understand. I mean, it, it, it was the non-union village employees who came to us, asking to be separated from the, from the contract.
Right, but they didn't ask to get it more strict or anything.
They asked to be separated from the contract.
The gentleman was very specific.
But as long as we have the opportunity to sort of fix this.
Yeah.
Um, I have a question actually about the titles. Do we have to have these titles in the village law?
Yes.
Because, okay, because I was, you know, as we sort of bend and flex and shift and change.
I was thinking about that too.
I know, but it's unfortunate, but we have to define them by title.
Right. Our titles are certified by Dutchess Kennedy.
Right.
Yeah. So I just thought we would have a new child title. We would recommend this to...
Right. Add the title.
But it's only by resolution. It's not by local law?
Right.
Right.
This is a resolution.
This is a resolution.
And what's, what's nice about article 124, it was adopted by resolution. It was not adopted by a local law. So that's how we can move forward with this as a resolution as well.
Again, this announcement, you could see as well, this was really my boy. Okay.
My, I can make a motion to, make a motion to accept resolution number one.
Second.
If I can, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second part of that, resolution number two. Part of this, because remember, since there's two parts. One is how we tie the financial benefits of the staff versus the union. Number two is what our staff had asked for was a way to be appraised or have a performance evaluation to be able to set their compensation package.
Right.
Which would be separate. So we would be, this is defined now as a separate compensation package for our village staff.
Right.
That would be identified based on, for the board of trustees here, hereafter, in the village, that the full-time non-union employees holding the following titles shall receive this compensation in amounts set forth for 2022, 23, not including longevity. So it's important that we set these amounts today.
Right.
Right, as hereby what they're getting. So it's the village clerk, the treasurer, deputy clerk, court clerk, police clerk, superintendent of public work, secretary of board of appeals, secretary of planning, etc. Be it further resolved that the wage increases for those full-time non-union employees holding the title set forth for the 23, 24 fiscal year and for each year thereafter should be tied to a performance evaluation. The village's current employee annual performance evaluation is attached to amendments accompanying this resolution. However, the village reserves the right, A, to modify or replace such form at its sole discretion, and B, eliminate the linkage to the wage increase to performance evaluations. And be it further resolved that for the 23, 24 fiscal year and for each year thereafter, the full-time non-union employees set forth shall have, shall be notified of their annual salary going no later than June of that year after the performance evaluation described herein. So this is moving from, they were tied to a January, which currently all of our UPS EU are tied to a January, which we tried, we're having trouble with. Let's be honest, let's face it, the January timeframe isn't working that well with us. Our police is on June. We used to be on June. This moves a staff, this moves a staff back to getting their performance evaluations prior to June, and then if noted, any increases they will get based on a performance evaluation will come in the June, in the June calendar month.
So we're tying comp sign to calendar, but salaries to...
But could, could we say that the evaluation should take place day in like February so that it can inform budget decisions?
It does say it will be prior to this.
Yeah.
So we don't have to give a month because it may be March, it may be April. We can do it March and April. We can, I don't want to be tied to a month until I do a month, and I'll review them all for you. Performance evaluations is something that you can do as part of an executive session.
Yeah.
I'll do them. I'll bring them in. We will have the discussion of performance evaluation in, in executive session. We will therefore set forth the requirements and then move forward.
Yeah. I think the point that Vanessa was trying to make though is, you know, we're in the process of setting budget now for next year. We don't know what everybody's going to get for raises. I know that we've reserved some money for it, but, you know.
Well, one of the issues is you have to have them, you have to notify them a year in advance of what their performance is. So doing this now is even setting that year, calendar year to next date, to next March.
Whoa, wait. So the performance reviews we do now don't impact the salaries that they get starting in June, but the starting?
You're not going to get an increase this June. They all had increases in January for the UPS EU.
You need a year's worth of performance to be able to evaluate the performance.
Oh, thanks. Sorry. I thought you were saying that we do the performance evaluations in like, say, March of 2025, and they don't get the raise until June of 2026. That's what I thought.
No, no.
It's like that.
Let's look at, let's look at calendar year 2024.
Yeah.
The performance evaluations will be March, April.
Yeah.
May.
Probably.
However, we want to do it.
Right.
You know, wherever we decide we want to do it, and then their increases would be in June of 2024. Which means they have to go now from, they got their increase in January of this year. They have to wait till June of next year, based on their performance to get a review. Makes sense?
Makes sense.
So what, in, does, is it a situation now where the union doesn't have to have positive performance to get a raise, but?
The union doesn't, does not allow performance evaluations.
But these folks now, because of this, have to have a positive performance evaluation based on
To get an increase.
to get an increase.
Well, that actually, it doesn't say that. It says,
Well, that's what...
It says the wage increase is linked to a performance review.
Right. But that wage could be increased, could be zero, or it could be X.
Yeah, we could do like a 1% cost of living, and then, you know, for everyone. I mean, it's really just under our discretion.
And everybody may be different. They won't be the same.
Right, exactly. So it's like...
Why can't we just remove the linkage? I mean, we have other teeth in our laws for poor employee ones. Why are...
I think it's important to link.
Actually, this is what they want. They want to be linked to a performance evaluation. This is that their
Or?
Yes.
A raise.
Yes. This is their request. And this is
And I think as a board, we can decide what a minimum raise should look like, even if like, you know, performance hasn't been great or whatever. I think we can still make allowances for cost of living and things like that. But if like, they've done an outstanding job, I would like the flexibility to be able to give them something more.
I think it's going to turn into a kind of a hotness.
I mean, performance evaluations are quite a thing.
Yeah.
Companies that I've worked at, it's like...
I've always had my raises linked to performance. Even when I worked in the state of Massachusetts, I had my raise linked to performance. There was like a minimum cost of living increase, and then anything I got about that was based on performance evaluation.
It's just going to be, we're going to be accused of being arbitrary and capricious, I think.
Not if it's, not if it's actually linked to a performance evaluation. I think if we decouple, then we will be...
There's a lot of fuzzy, there's a lot of fuzzy language in there, you know.
That's pretty subjective.
Yeah. But I mean, like, you can't be, I mean, arbitrary and capricious is a legal term, and you can't be accused of arbitrary and capricious if like, you actually have a system set up for it.
And we have a performance.
I didn't mean it, I didn't mean it as a legal term.
Oh, okay.
And, and we have attached this, and everybody, and the staff has had the opportunity to review this performance evaluation, which you now have, and you have seen, and there's been no objection to this performance evaluation as it's written here either, by our staff.
Where did you get that from?
Most of us came from NICOM.
I mean, a lot of the things I like about performance evaluations is when, when the employee is asked for their input on how to improve things, and that's when you can really see how creative they are, or how they've been held down, or how they, or what we can do moving forward, and if there's like none of that in there.
Well, you read the, do you read the purpose?
I...
The purpose does exactly say that, is to identify a plan.
There's no underlying criteria that lead to that, so.
Identify a plan for that employee that will pursue and improve performance when necessary and provide development needs and/or part.
Yeah, but what I'm talking about is when you ask the employee, what can we do better here? Why, what, what are your interests for, you know, how would you change things here? How would you?
Yeah. Brent, I think that the best performance reviews happen in a culture where there's, there's trust, and there's an ability to have 360 feedback, right? So it's a conversation where it's not just directed one way. And like, maybe, I don't know if that needs to be like written in there, but that's like the way that culturally we should operate.
Yeah. I'm willing to take amendments to this. You've had it for several weeks. I'm willing to take amendments to this.
I haven't seen this.
And it was sent to you in an email. Everybody?
The first line is, "The purpose of the performance management is a continual process in which the manager and the employee engage in candid discussions regarding all aspects of the employee's performance."
And the discussion should be
Right. And the underlying criteria is listed below, and, and there's not anything just about old stuff.
The discussion should be ongoing, focusing competencies, individual walls, and, and other performance factors, so.
Yeah.
If you want, I can take, I can try to get some stuff on that.
If you want to make amendments to this, that's fine.
Unless you guys want to vote on it now.
I mean,
I think it should be improved.
To me, the first sentence allows, basically, it says it's going to be a dialogue.
The first sentence is a purpose sentence. It's aspirational, and the other, and the stuff is below it is more specific, and it's not about what I said. Asking the employee, one of the criterias, for the employee, because they're usually, a lot of times the experts, what you, what systems and processes do you think can be improved? So we can improve. Right? Again, you're reading something general, and the underlying stuff beneath it is more specific and has nothing to do with that.
Maybe we could add something right now in like, there's communications, self-development, learning, growth, innovation, creativity, teamwork and integrity, job skills and work habit. Maybe we could make a fifth or sixth, I don't remember how many I just read, category of... Or maybe we just add a bullet point under each one of these. But...
Like, are there any impediments to your success here?
Yeah.
Do you have ideas for improvement for the whole operation?
Right. We could just add a single bullet point under each one of these categories that, that specifically asks for that.
Why would that be in definition of competencies? Wouldn't that be up top?
Well, Brent is making the argument that up top has no teeth, whereas what goes below has teeth, so I'm trying to resolve that.
I also, I also feel like usually when, when you're doing this sort of thing, the way I've seen it is like, then there's a tool. There's like a form that gets filled out or something where there are boxes, you know, to be filled in with prompts.
There's, there's, there's 40,000 different.
Right.
Yeah. It seems like this is just generally a conversation.
Right.
Yeah.
And like, all of these bullets guide a conversation.
Right.
As you've all had it in other jobs or whatever, there's been all sorts of performance review processes.
Right.
Projects.
I mean, I can get some, I know some HR folks, just like...
If you're going to change this, change it. We have, and we can vote on, vote on the employee performance portion next. We can adopt the resolutions and say we're going to
Yeah.
Because it's our right, as we've said, to, right, modify or replace such form at its sole discretion.
Yeah. I think we could go down this and then say there's a step two, which is to develop the actual like feedback form or evaluation form that gets used as a tool.
What happens if it just goes under the purpose of the appraisal is to? And then the first bullet point could be solicit feedback from the employee about their work conditions and experience.
It isn't just soliciting feedback. It's, what's the quality of that feedback? Because that's part of my evaluation. If this person's creative and they say, hey, you guys have been doing this for a while. I've got a better idea. Then it's almost like, that's part of this, that's part of the performance. Do you see what I mean? It isn't just a suggestion. It isn't, it isn't necessarily feedback. It's like, I'm measuring your dude by based on what, what they're coming up with.
I misunderstood. So what you're saying is, are they forthcoming with creativity in the course of the year? Not necessarily in the course of the year.
Well, and then, but that's...
I mean, one of the bullets does say, under the purpose, it says, allow a structured environment for the employee and the manager to communicate openly about the employee's job performance, current job responsibilities, expectations of development.
I can't.
And then identify a plan that the employee will pursue to improve performance.
I can't go, I can't improve it right now.
No, I, I know. I'm just, you know, I, I think, I think we can accept this, and then maybe like, now that this is real, like, we can all, you know, take a good hard look at it, but I do.
Let me, let me read it. "The village's current employee annual performance evaluation form is attached to the minutes accompanying this resolution. However, the village reserves the right to modify or replace such form at its sole discretion."
But we're kind of doing the annual one right now.
Right. So, so I just want to say, so Brent, what you're saying is defining, defining this coming forward that you're talking about as a competency to be demonstrated. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. So it's not really part of the process. It's part of their job.
It's, it's part of this, because what we're doing is, this is, we're describing what their merit, their merits and failings have been. So I want to add that.
You want to add that as a, as a, as a point of criteria, a criteria for evaluation.
Yeah. But also that's, the performance itself is, it's sort of like that quality time to, where that person would be more candid about changes without getting, you know, in trouble or anything.
I'm fine. I'm fine. So listen, I
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number two. We can change the evaluation at our sole discretion. Submit to your input. We'll hash it out, and we'll go forward.
I'll get you some.
Okay?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So give me your comments on the performance evaluation. I will get it back to the staff who's had a chance to review all of this.
Okay.
And have reviewed them and accepted it. Okay. Next.
At ten.
First, first responder at ten. So... We've been working on this project for quite some time. Everybody, just to remind the public, this is our, we have a current antenna system, a communication antenna system that resides on private property up on Burger Hill. That antenna and equipment needs serious update, and it also is on private property, which should be remedied as possible. We went through a lot of work trying to find out whether we should upgrade it on site, make those improvements. We looked at options of putting it on this roof, and we also looked at options of putting on a cell tower. And we adopted a plan to move forward to put it, these communication towers on top of the existing cell tower outside our building. All right. So they are antennas. Currently, the one at the top of Burger Hill only serves the fire. Uh, what we wanted to do was add in police communication, because our police communication is not the best. And it has a tower, a small tower here on top of the police building, and there's dead spots even within the village. And if they're hired, as we're contracted to do patrols in the town, there's very little communication with police on this antenna if they're out in the town on radio communication. So moving it to the tower, moving it to the cell tower here, and moving, have a separate antenna for police and a separate antenna for fire, two different frequencies on top of that tower, resolves all of those problems and brings it back into here. And what we started out with, at looking at and getting a quote for doing the adjustments up on private property, was estimated at 240,000 to build a new tower and do all that. The current cost of putting it on our tower here, which has been agreed to by Crown Castle, which supports, which releases Tower Two, and also agreed to by NICOM Co., which is work of Crown Castle to be able to install and verify that the equipment will work. They gave us a quote for $27,488.89 to install, set up our communications here on the cell tower. So what I'd like to propose now is the resolution, whereas the existing communication tower located on private property is in need of repair need of repair and an easement, if it is be kept in this location, and to continue to operate, and whereas the village has investigated cost of upgrading and adding to police communications as part of this upgrade, whereas communication is vital for all of our first responders, whereas after review of all the options, the best option is to add this to the cellular tower here at Village Hall. Whereas Crown Castle and NICOMCO and the village board inspector have approved this location, whereas NICOMCO has submitted this invoice for twenty seven thousand four and eighty, eighty nine, for twenty seven thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars and eighty nine cents for the installation of police and fire antennas. Whereas this project is of high priority to complete, for both fire and police have agreed to allocate capital reserves to pay for this upgrade. So therefore, twenty thousand dollars will be transferred from the fire capital fund, seven thousand four hundred and eighty eight dollars and eighty nine cents will be transferred from the police capital fund to pay for this upgrade. Second. I make a motion to approve the resolution. Second by Lydia, discussion?
What's, what's going to happen to the old antenna?
We're going to tear it down.
Okay.
I mean, it's basically five, two by fours and like.
It's, so, it's, there's an existing shed. We don't have to remove the shed that has equipment. We remove the equipment. There was an existing hole that was there. A long time ago, it was a church antenna, used for some church organization. The fire company adopted that hole and put the antenna on top of that hole, right? So we just basically have to remove that antenna, remove the pole, remove our equipment. It's a minimal cost.
We do that in-house or do we do a budget for that?
Well, we probably won't do it in-house. We'll probably have to bring a cherry picker in to take the antenna off when the ground is hardened, and we're not going to do any damage up there, but it's a minimal cost. The fire company is looking into that cost right now to remove that.
Nice thing about them is like, you know, one of the guys owns a cherry picker.
This is, this is actually a good deal. So. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So Karen. Karen? I want to move the box.
What do you say?
Yeah.
As long as we can get another ten, I'm going to die.
Yeah, both of them have gone to that. All right, now. Compost. Approve the fund balance transfer for a comprehensive plan. Everybody knows we've been deeply engaged into a comprehensive plan for a long time. I hope everybody realizes that comprehensive plans cost money to be able to keep funding, and currently we are, been feeding the comprehensive plans and dribs and drabs, and we still are going to continue to do that while we look to get additional funding to keep the comprehensive plan going. So this resolution, whereas the comprehensive plan process, called the comprehensive plan, needs additional funding to maintain operations for this fiscal year, which is twenty-two, twenty-three, whereas the initial funding request for the comprehensive plan was seventy-five thousand for twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, and was ultimately funded at fifty thousand with the hope of getting additional grants. And whereas a grant of ten thousand was obtained from the Hudson River Valley Greenway, whereas another grant for a hundred thousand was not successful. Whereas the operating cost of the comprehensive plan to date this fiscal year are sixty-three thousand dollars. Whereas it anticipated the comprehensive plan will need ninety thousand total for this fiscal year, fiscal year. And whereas the current balance, current fund balance of six hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars is within the range for allocating an additional fund balance transfer to support the comprehensive plan. And whereas a fund balance transfer of thirty thousand dollars that was approved for the purchase of the police body cameras will not be used because the police department earned a grant to cover that expenditure. Therefore, let it be resolved, the village of Rhinebeck transfer of thirty thousand dollars from fund balance to the comprehensive plan lying on for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year.
Second.
I make a motion to approve the comprehensive plan resolution as written. Lydia already discussion?
So I thought we were, we budgeted fifty, and then we got ten, and then I thought this forthcoming year, we're going to budget fifty.
That's true.
So it's a hundred and ten, and this is, adds up to ninety plus.
For what we need for this year.
More than that.
Yeah. As we said, we're, we need more money for the twenty-two, twenty-three.
I know, it's just more expensive than I thought it was. What is the task order look like?
Uh, the task order is actually in the process of being sort of reworked, but the current task order is authorized for eighty thousand dollars. And that task order from tie-in bond is just tie-in bond. It doesn't include legal. And, yeah.
But then the planner, the planners underneath that.
Yeah, the planner's underneath the tie-in bond draw, and what's been going on is sort of a number of things. One, the speed at which we thought, or the speed at which the original task order was designed for was to be like in and out in a year. That is not going to happen. It's going to be a little bit longer than a year, so every additional month takes money. And it's not going to go much past that. We're hoping to actually have something presented, well, we, they are hoping to have something presented to us probably by the end of the summer, early September, or early fall. And so that's probably, that's sort of issue number one. The one-year timeline was always an incredibly aggressive schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then issue number two, what is, sort of, we're a victim in some respects of our own success, like having so many people involved and having such like vital work being done at the subcommittee level, took a lot of time and attention of the planner to kind of manage all of those conversations and feed the information that all the subcommittees needed. And so it just, that part ended up just being slightly more expensive, but what we have understood as a result of that is that we have basically one planner, and then we've had all of this work being done, and as a result, like, in the amount of time that they've been working, we've gotten more done than anybody has ever seen. And the quality of the recommendations that are coming forward are really exemplary. So it is slightly more expensive than I think any of us were originally hoping, but, you know, as I was pushing for last year, like, we always under budgeted for it. It was always going to be more expensive than what we budgeted for. And I think we were just, we were hoping for grants, and a couple of those grants didn't come through. I am going to be reporting on a grant that I'm going to be filing before the end of March, which will hopefully get us another ten, fifteen thousand dollars. And then we're going to be eyeing whatever's going to come out of the state budget, which hopefully should be some interesting stuff. But, you know, at the end of the day, this is vitally important stuff for the village, and I think that we've been doing actually a pretty good job for keeping the costs down, given the number of people who've been involved. I made a joke with the comp plan actually the other night, that, you know, if we'd done this with seven members of the comp, of the comp plan committee in like a small dark room, we could have gotten it done in three months, but it would have been a really, really, for like fifteen thousand dollars, but it would have been a truly terrible plan, because it wouldn't have done nearly the work that everybody's been doing to engage the public with it. And to get all sorts of really interesting, new-fangled ideas. New-fangled ideas.
I'd just like to note that, you know, thanks to our village police who got the paperwork, saw the, saw the ability to apply for a grant not known, that we had already funded with fund balance, we now have a gift.
Well, there's that. I did thank you for.
And we have a gift.
Getting a grant for me.
Yes, thank you. And so we have an opportunity to take advantage of that, because we'd already approved to move, move that thirty thousand from fund balance. I think the right place to move it is to our comp plan, because we want to keep this, we want to keep the train on the track. We really do, and this doesn't get us to the station, but at least keeps the train on the track right now that we can continue forward.
This is not, this thirty grand movement is not kind of what I'm worried about. It's like the next fifty, like, can we see a product with this, in this fiscal year, and then scope, and then see where, where we're headed?
At multiple meetings over the course of the past four months, there's been really remarkable product shared.
Yeah, but I don't, I do believe there should be a firewall between us and the comp plan.
Yeah.
I, that's one of the reasons why I just kind of stayed out of it.
True, but like, they are public meetings.
I would sort of like them, just like I bring the, you know, the water plants or the wastewater plants forward, like, I want to see like, okay, by the end of this fiscal year, we're going to see something. This is what we've got. This is the product we have so far.
Can you look at the presentations that they've done?
So there's actually, I, I know that they haven't presented to us, because it's not actually appropriate for them to present to us yet, but all of these meetings are public meetings that anybody can attend, and the work product that has been coming out of these meetings from the subcommittees up to the main committee, and now the main committee is working on, is really extraordinary work.
Yeah, and it's, I thought largely it was going to be volunteer efforts.
It is largely volunteer.
This is actually money here.
Well, right, because the volunteer efforts had to be managed and guided by someone who knew what they were doing. And that had to be a professional planner. That was never going to be.
And we agreed to hire a professional planner in the onset.
Yeah.
We did, and maybe we should, could have a professional planner and status reports for something.
And one of, one of the things I've asked, one of, one of the things I've asked Lydia for is to actually go back to the committee and come back with a budget request as well. I mean, they're the ones that have the finger on the pulse right now. They want to keep the momentum going. They, they want to know where they're going, so they have the best of the ability to come, come back and give us a projection as well, because we are working on twenty-three, twenty-four, and we're allocating as much money as we ha, as we can to allocate into the comprehensive plan, but I'd like to see something also from now as well.
I'd just like to see, like, maybe you can come forward and just say, here's, here's what the planner's been doing. Here's what the attorneys have been doing.
The planner has been guiding the process of the subcommittees, and if you want, there are six presentations that came out of the subcommittees that you are more than welcome to see.
Yeah, they're all there.
I just don't know what, how much of that was volunteer and how much of it was.
Most of it was volunteer. I'd say ninety-five percent of it, ninety-eight percent of it was volunteer. We've got, we've got four of them in the audience right now. Four of the five people in the audience are volunteers on the subcommittee.
I, yeah, I understand there's a lot of volunteers. I, I understand they're doing valuable stuff. I just kind of.
I mean. Okay.
I mean, what do you want me to do? You want me to go to the website and look at the auditor's figures progress report?
Well, I'm trying to figure out, like.
What, I want to, I want to know what.
There must be an extraordinary amount of.
Instead of just looking at the invoices, thirty days later, I'm.
Wait, have one person talk at a time, okay?
Okay, go ahead.
I, instead of looking at the invoices once upon a turn of cars, what our consultants have spent money on, just summary of what they've, what they've been, what they've been doing.
Nine-tenths of what they've, of what Michelle's been doing has been working with the subcommittees on their ultimate final product, which went out to the main committee. And now she's working with the main committee on their ultimate final product, and so it's time spent working with these dozens of humans who have been providing the bulk of this effort. She's one person who's been wrangling probably four dozen cats for the last year, and that takes time. And also, she's not the, you know, she's, she's most of that sixty-three thousand dollars, but she's not all of it. We've also had legal support. We've also had, you know, people have gotten postcards. You've seen, you know, lawn signs. Like, there's been multiple things that have been spent on the, the two thousand dollars for the Oak Street project came out of the comp plan, the two thousand dollars for the Red Cloak survey came out of the comp plan. So there's, you know, the actual survey came out of the survey out of the comp plan, and that was, you know, a survey monkey costs money, right? So like.
I'd like to make comment that too at the last meeting, Lydia.
I can provide like a complete breakdown of the answer.
I was talking. At the last comprehensive plan meeting, the main committee was tasked with the night, was tasked with going forward, and they said they absolutely positively need that planner at, at the meeting to move, be able to make decisions and move forward.
I know, okay.
So this is the main committee asking us to help them.
I get it, okay.
Okay?
I'm concerned about the runaway train that happened across the street.
I, I don't think we're anywhere near a three million dollar runaway train, to be brutally honest. If this whole thing ends up costing more than two hundred thousand dollars, I will fall over, and if it ends up costing. Well, I, well, but at least, the like, you know, we will figure it out as it moves forward, but like, we don't, you know, literally, like, it's actually been interesting talking to the planner and talking to a few other people who've done a lot of comp plans. No one has ever seen such a robust community engagement process as part of it, with the number of people volunteering for subcommittees, with subcommittees no less, and then the number of sort of engagement and opportunities throughout the community. And so in some respects, like, we're all kind of making it up as we go along, including them. And who knows, maybe we'll find a fantastic graphic designer who's willing to give us a bunch of her time to help flesh out what we expect to be a good portion of the most expensive part of what's to come.
And by history here, engagement is sacred to money.
I, I think in this case, engagement has actually been giving us a product that's about a billion times better than it would be without the engagement, and then it'd probably end up costing us the same. Because either it's volunteers doing research and work and, you know, public listening, or it's paid people doing research and work and public listening, and I think, given the amount of work that the subcommittees have done, this is cheap.
All right, I'm going to.
That's the idea.
I'm going to, we've had a good discussion. We're going kind of round and round.
Yeah.
We have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the company has a planned resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. All moving on. Okay, next. We passed the resolution a long time ago when somebody joined the fire department. It's, it's expeditious on their part to get them engaged when they come on board. We let them get engaged, but we formally announced the new members at our next meeting. This one is really, I'm going to announce that we approved Dave Leary to join the Village of Rhinebeck Fire Department.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those of us who know Dave Leary know that he doesn't. No, he belonged to another fire department.
Oh.
He just, his brother was here.
Thanks.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. I am able to write with the town of Rhinebeck on the compost facility.
Okay, so, as you all know, we're, we got these grants to build our compost facility, and I approached the town board to talk about how can this be a partnership so that it's not a compost facility only open if you, to you if you're a village resident. It makes a lot more sense if it's the entire entirety of Rhinebeck. And so I made a proposal to them that they match us in what we've put in thus far in our preparation, how we got today to today. So we spent about twelve thousand dollars. We had our, you know, our ten-month pilot program, and we've been working with tie-in bond on the site plan, and so I'm asking for the town for twelve grand to help us get to that fully, full estimate budget that we got from tie-in bond for the construction. So that's like the upfront capital investment. And then I also put together an estimation of ongoing operational costs, including staff time of Tom at the highway department, or somebody, a staff member at the highway department. Accounting for their time, Karen gave me a number, not just for their salaries, but also their benefits, so a really holistic number. And so what I'm proposing for the town to do is to go in hossies with us annually, so twelve thousand five hundred annually, and to really have, to have that intermunicipal agreement. And obviously, we're going to learn a lot after our first year, even after our second year, so I think we need to build in there a checkpoint to reevaluate, but I'm asking for a commitment of at least a few, few years. And so I, I broached this, kind of pitched it to the town board, and, and they asked for the details on the money that we've put in thus far, and there are other requests is, like, I think they want more assurances that this is relevant to town context, not just to a village context. So I'm thinking through, like, how do we, how do we, without like micromanaging some kind of like onerous accounting system for tracking who was participating, how do we, how do we show that there's value in, in this for the town people as well as, as village? How do we, how do we show that there's value in, in this for the town people as well as, as village? So when I'm, I'd like to make a motion.
They actually asked one more thing. They asked for a one-year checkpoint.
Right, right.
So rather than a three, I understand it's a three-year IMA with a one-year analysis to be able to say, bring it out.
Yeah. And I just like, considering that what, what this means, working as partners together, means that, for instance, if you use the town transfer station, there would be a drop-off point for you there, for instance. Or it means that there could be a drop-off point at the town park. So really, it makes a lot of sense if we're gonna, you know, look at this holistically to, to have collection points where people are already gonna be going, right? So it's, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, this could be like a true partnership and that we would both be invested in its success and not just trying to like carve out, you know, the pieces that we feel like we're really on the hook for, do you know what I mean? And that's why I think like going hapsies makes, makes a lot of sense.
Just for the record, the town is, as she, when she pitches to them, you know, we have not approved or done this yet. This was given in, taken at their board meeting. It got publicity in the Freeman as well, in terms of what we're doing and going forward with. But they have not adopted our group plan. So this is.
I wanted us to look at this first before taking it from them.
This is for us to approve, and then we can go back and negotiate that with the town based on what we've approved.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the resolution.
With the change that there's a one-year checkpoint.
Second.
My, my question is that the first year is gonna be a teething, a teething year, right? And there's gonna be some additional cost, right, if we're gonna drop off, you know, waste, you know, buckets up at the transfer station and all kinds of stuff. Should we really make it two years to see what it's actually operating? The first year's gonna be anomalous.
Yeah. I would prefer that, Rick.
Okay. Do you think they're not, they're not, they are not amendable to?
I think they're amendable. I think they're just trying to do their due diligence to make sure.
It's a negotiation point right now. We'll call it that.
Yeah. And I mean, we'll, we're gonna keep track of all those costs that come up. I mean, if you're starting something, like, I tried to account for everything in my estimation, but like, things will come up. This is a new project. So I think we both, both town and village have to understand that.
We're not whole yet. We're asking them for the twelve K to make us whole so we can build the site as well. So we haven't committed to build the site yet.
And does this.
And, excuse me, we have, we, we haven't finalized yet the agreement yet to get the sightlines, to get DOT to be able to turn in there.
And does this change the size of the site?
No, because the, the site is designed for us to be able to start small and then scale up. There's room to grow in the site. And the, one of the reasons we chose this type of composting process, the ASP, is that it's very like, modular. Like, you can add on another section to it.
Another room.
Okay, yeah. Room to grow.
Once you have the infrastructure in place, that's the easy part.
Yeah. And so, like, you could think about that in terms of organically, more residents, you know, getting hip to this and starting up. But you could also think about it in terms of our strategic outreach to additional partners, like the school district, or like to Brookmead, or to the hospital, you know? So we, we would throttle that growth along with those partners.
So we'll see. If they, they can either be in or out, right? My opinion is, if they're in, that's great. If they're not in.
Then we are, we'll publicly say no.
If they're, they can be in or out, you know? So it's gonna be their choice. All right, so I'm gonna call for a vote to accept the Village of Rhinebeck compost facility agreement with the town of Rhinebeck.
Are we holding fast to the wonder of the three?
It's a three-year IMA, right, with a one-year checkpoint right now.
They were insisting on that.
They were insisting on a one-year checkpoint.
You wanted a two-year, we're asking for, they want a one-year.
I mean, regardless, like, at one year, I'm gonna say, look, here's what we spent money on. Here's how it's been operating. You know, as a, as a partner, like, here's how it's going.
We may bring this back, Rick. Bottom line is we, we just may come back around till we finish the negotiations.
Okay, good. What happens if they bail after year one?
Well, then, then we'll figure it out.
And they'll have given us twelve grand to finish building the thing, and then we'll publicly shame them and start again.
All right, so we have.
Take a course of action.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, let's move on. Okay. Why don't you go on to even, my own hill?
Okay, great. So, so as you all know, I'm in the, the process of the town planning board approval for the site. Because we're in the town. The compost site is located in the town, not in the village. So we have to go before the town planning board. And as a piece of that, we're looking at the entrance on Violet Hill Road, right? That's actually a county road. So in speaking with the county, they were like, you know, in order for you to really use this driveway, you need to get an easement over the, the neighboring property. So that sightlines, as you enter and exit that driveway, are clear. So I approached the neighbor, which is St. Chris Fender at twenty-two Violet Hill Road, and he's totally amendable to this. I did talk to Rich Olson, and he drafted it up. Initially, when I heard easement, I was like, oh my God, sounds like it's gonna delay everything. But it doesn't seem that difficult. The last piece I need to get is work with Time Bond to get like a surveyor meets and bounds description of the, of the site, of the easement. So I'm, I'm just asking, I guess I'm asking for my estimate for a resolution, or am I just letting you know?
So I.
It's already a resolution, so I'm just accepting the resolution. Are you, can you please make a motion for you to accept the resolution about the easement?
To, what I was asking for is to go forward with the resolution, to work with the landlord to do this.
Yeah.
Right. What we don't know is the cost of the survey yet, or whether we can get the survey done.
Yeah, but that would be, that would be part of the, the budget for the compost facility. And, and really what we're doing here, like, even if there weren't a compost facility, we're making this a fully functional driveway.
Right.
Because, right, because it has.
Of, of the.
Right, yeah.
So I would like to see some more declarative language in here, in the easement itself. We, if, if we have the right, for the sightline, I would like to see that we have the right of access and the right of brush removal. And easement should be very specific, so you don't haggle about what it really means later. Like, they might say, no, no, I'm gonna cut the brush, and then it's not appropriate, and then the county highway department. Do you see what I mean? Like a right, like to, right to clear brush, right of access.
Okay, gotcha.
And then they usually come back and say, they would like to make restoration, a requirement that we restore, any kind of, you know, if we monitor the property in some way. But if you could do act of reach on that.
Sure, okay, that's great.
You almost hit like a purpose clause in there, which is fine. I mean, you have to have that, but.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
All right, so I'll table this later, make amendments, look up, look at our legal.
Yes.
Okay, all right. We'll table that too. Moving on. Next item is, and these are only so applicable, Brian, is there anything in the water plant, Rick?
So I'd like to have Delaware come back in April and sort of narrow the scope of both of the projects for water and wastewater. So maybe a ten-minute presentation on each, so they can produce a, for wastewater engineering contract that will. We can sign.
Actual ten minutes, because I feel like I know exactly how the water plant works now.
It depends on your, I'm gonna tell a certain person that he can't follow. Because he didn't.
It was fascinating, but it was not intense.
Is that why?
On, Rick loved it, come on, so.
What are you talking about?
First time I've seen Rick on the edge of his seat. Let's keep moving, let's keep moving on here. We've got a lot of business. Center, anything, I don't have anything on Center Street. Anybody have that? I've been no updates from moving forward. Same thing on the Village Hall sidewalk. That's moving forward. We moved forward for permitting for that. We're not having an upgrade, update on that. Six Mulberry Streets?
The only upgrade, update I have on that is by the end of this week, we're gonna be releasing a webpage on the Village, VillageRhinebeck.org website on everything having to do with Six Mulberry Street.
Historic district?
No.
Locust Hill?
No updates. They should be working on that, of course.
We've talked about your antenna already, so that's done. We talked about composting, that's done. That's secure projects, pending projects, after bridge.
Yeah, I think we should talk about that. So the state is going to be replacing the bridge across the Landsman Kill at, at Route Nine, basically down by, down by the park. The existing configuration right now is a little, there's a little bridge that's used for pedestrians, and then there's the vehicular bridge. And it was our hope that we could maintain that configuration within DOT's new design. But it turned out for safety reasons that basically we can't do that. Just we, we went around with Time Bond, we went around with DOT, and it just, there wasn't really a viable, a viable solution. So the, we will have a bridge where we will have the, the barriers that are somewhat reminiscent of the balustrades that were on the original Astor Bridge. But we're gonna have a sidewalk that is inside those balustrades, and there will be some sort of visual demarcation between the roadway and the sidewalk. So right now, the DOT has said, okay, we're gonna come back, we have, we're gonna start, start our plans, come back with some drawings. And we'll be looking at that, and they don't intend to start building until 2025. So, so we have a little bit of time. The objects of interest, though, there are two iron railings on the old pedestrian bridge. And as best we can tell, they probably date from sometime in the early, I'm sorry, in the very late eighteen hundreds. So we're gonna have them remove the railings, and then we'll give them to us, so we can figure out what we would like to do with them. They are of historic interest.
I feel like that's probably not the first time that's happened with those railings, if they're actually that old.
Yes, they, yeah, no, they've been moved. We can see the old pictures and everything, yeah. So then they'll be in our possession, and we can figure out if there's a best way, how, how we wanna use them. And that is essentially the only item of actual historic interest or value of that entire configuration down there. So we're looking forward to seeing their plans as they come about.
Okay. We are, now, we're talking about Shawham?
I think we're still in D, D C to get our withdrawal permit area expanded, so permitted. And they're paying for it. It's in this process.
Let's go. Village, our Flex Tech, any updates? Nothing, right? And our complete street through Nine Corridor, same, no updates. Lydia, you talked about a grant. You want, you have a grant you wanna talk about?
Oh, yeah. The Thompson Trust's actually solicited a grant from us about the comp plan. So I'll be submitting a application to them before the end of month.
For how much?
You know, I'm gonna ask for twenty, and I'm gonna guess that we'll get probably ten, but we'll see.
Anything we'll take?
Yeah.
Okay. Purchase requests. First one is labor attorney fee change. We have a request from our legal fees for twenty-three, twenty-four, and this is yearly about this time of year. They advise our any clients of any anticipated changes in fees for coming year, for the period June first, twenty-twenty-three through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. They're asking for a ten-dollar per hour increase in the hourly rate for attorneys to provide legal services to the Village of Rhinebeck. Therefore, the hourly rate for attorneys will increase from two-twenty-five to two-thirty-five. In addition, the hourly rate for paralegal service will increase by five dollars from one of five to around ten. I'd like to make a motion to accept the legal fees for our labor attorney as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Michelle.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, highway dump truck.
None.
No, this is the one that, no, this is the one that.
I got nothing to vote for.
Not true. I don't know. There's nothing there?
I wasn't given anything, no.
Oh, well, I don't have it, so let's, let, let me summarize this. This is for truck seven, which is our oldest truck that we have in the highway department that is in vastly need of repair. And there is an opportunity to purchase an existing truck that is held by Romeo for us to use, pick up if we so choose to want to make that investment into this truck. During the budget process, we discussed this option of this truck, and we decided that was best. Since there was availability, we would try to move forward in this fiscal year to purchase this truck. And we asked Karen to come out with some interest rate fees, so we can identify how much we're gonna be able to have to spend and when the payments will begin. Karen?
Okay, so the, the truck is a twenty-two GMC Sierra K thirty-five hundred. It's sixty thousand, eight seventy-five fifty. What's not included in this is the lights and lettering, which we discussed will be added on to that. I did receive, I did solicit three interests, three quotes for interest rates. So however, I received one that I would ask the board to reject. It's, it has the lowest interest rate, but the total payment is higher than the other two, so it just does not seem. I had a problem with this company.
Were rejected before, so.
The, the next two interest rates are six-point-eight and five-point-nine-three. I know they sound high, but that's where we're at with, you know, with borrowing money, so.
Well, we're earning almost four-point-eight off of them, so there we go. There we go.
So that reduced. So, so my recommendation is to award the government capital, the five-year municipal lease purchase at five-point-nine-three percent, five annual payments of fourteen thousand, four twenty-seven, sixty-five.
Second.
Except for the, except for the one, the lights and letters will be added today.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase for sale lease at the five-point-nine-three percent as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
How is the sale lease thing working? Do we, we own it after X amount of months or something?
After five months.
After five, after the whole five, okay.
For one year.
We said there were one left.
I have something I'm hiding right here.
And paint, the first payment will be Karen, the first payment will be due.
It will start a year from today, and it is included in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, the payment for its price.
Is it? Is it like a bond where we're, we're stuck with the rate, or if rates go down, which?
No, it's not adjustable.
Or if rates go up.
Well, we're, we're in the money, they have.
Is, is there a pre-bid penalty?
I never asked them that because we've never been on a decision.
What a delightful problem to have. Yeah, do I get that?
All right, all in favor of a, a person, you know, highway dump truck, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Part two of that, surplus truck number seven, right? We have two choices. One is to put it out to auction. We've not had very good luck with selling anything really on the auction.
We have, we have. We've sold several things on the auction. We have this little vehicle on the auction.
Yes, okay, thank you for correcting that. But we had good luck putting it out for bid.
Yes.
And we can approve or reject bids. So I'd like to make a motion that we put surplus truck number seven out for bid.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Can you amend that to surplus it and then put it out for sealed bid?
What?
We've got motion to surplus it first and then put it out for sealed bid, for how you're going to collect them.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to surplus truck seven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I'd like to make a motion to put truck number seven out for sealed bid. I'd like to make a motion to put truck number seven out for sealed bid.
Second.
Uh, for how long?
What do you usually mean, like a month?
It all depends.
Forty-five minutes.
Do you wanna do, you wanna announce? If you, yeah, would you like to, and collect it the Friday before, so that you can choose and select it at the next meeting?
Yes.
So that'll be April.
Eleven.
No.
Oh, you're gonna do.
The Friday before is April eighth, uh, seventh.
If we don't get any bids, we can adjust. Alright, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, next. Two of us would like to attend the next NICOM meeting, if anybody else wants to go, please raise your hand. But myself and Martina would like to attend the twenty twenty-three NICOM annual meetings. What was the total cost? Three hundred and twenty dollars to, you know, depending if you stay or don't stay. I don't plan on staying, I plan on commuting, and, but I'd like to make a motion to, uh, allocate the fund at the registration of three hundred and thirty-five dollars for both each, for both Martina and I to attend the NICOM annual conference. I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
There, there looked like there was some good stuff, but I'm away, actually. When is it?
May seventeen.
And for the rest of my life, I can go.
May seventeen through the nineteenth.
What?
She asked when it was.
I was curious, but. May seventeen.
So. That's three thirty start for the entire attendance, does that also include the over?
No. I haven't.
I would like to stay.
We're approved to go.
Yeah, okay.
We're, we're approved to go.
So I will register as.
And sometime in May, it wasn't, it was.
May seventeen through the nineteenth.
That's what it was. Okay, special requests. First special request is, uh, we got the event applications from the fairgrounds, which includes all their events. I would like to make a motion to accept the events presented by Tulsa County Fairgrounds.
Second.
Discussion?
Did it, it looked like they didn't wanna, they weren't gonna close Mulberry for sheep and wool? Don't they usually do that?
No, because they changed the entrance all down to the other side now.
Yeah, the only one they closed Mulberry from now is the fair.
There was one other one too. There were two closures in Mulberry, I think.
Not since I've lived on Mulberry.
I think you're correct, in the past, when they had Mulberry Street, they were using more than Mulberry.
I thought I saw two today, I'm just saying.
Didn't, uh, didn't the Dellman's ride exit that way?
Maybe that was.
That's just in that little parking lot outside, though, that's what they chose to close the road.
I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, next request is for a, the fire company would put it a wet down? But in our terminology, it's an open house.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
A wet down. So basically, when you get new fire equipment, the official inauguration of the equipment is you hose them down.
Right.
You just literally fire on the hoses, and you, and that's why it's called the wet down, and, you know, it, it basically puts that unit in service. But we're calling it an open house.
How very civilized of us.
And the open, this is for the open house on May seventh, which happens to be also the first, uh, event, the first time the home market is open as well. But they're gonna do a lot of provocation on their new apparatus, discuss with the new ambulance. And we've talked, I talked to Chief Knapp about explaining how a nine-one-one call works. Because there's a lot of questions about what happens when you dial nine-one-one, right? Where does that call go to, who answers it, who, who gets responded? So there's gonna be some communication and some training and some outreach about doing that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rhinebeck, Village of Rhinebeck Fire Department open house on May seventh.
Wet down.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Does it come with a dump tank?
You guys are getting silly already, we have not even done. Been here too long, I'm sure. We have any, we have minutes to approve, correct, Martina?
Yes, um, so last month's, which would be February fourteenth, and then the budget meeting minutes, which would be February twenty-first, February twenty-third, March eighth, and that's it.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes presented by the village clerk and our treasurer, who did the budget meetings.
I have one small comment, and it's only, I'm only saying it publicly because she's here. Linda Christensen's name is spelled O-Y, not L-I.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I will fix that.
I made, Vanessa made the corrections.
Oh, thanks.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, Rick, tree commission.
Okay, a couple of pieces of news and then a piece of action. So, um, the tree commissioner actually is sort of blessed, we now have five new applicants for the tree commission.
That's exciting.
It is very exciting. And, um, the commission is currently, um, has received, is receiving letters and is currently reviewing, um, the applicants, and hopefully we'll have a couple people to appoint. Um, the second one is that the, um, tree commission is always concerned about communicating with residents about their responsibilities for trees, um, both, um, when they need to get planted, when they, or when they're planting them, um, when they're being pruned, and the fact that you do need to fill out an application to remove or prune a street tree, not all the trees, but basically the trees that are within the village right of way. And just communicating this has always been a problem. So, um, we developed a letter, uh, which with Martina's help, we both, um, mailed and emailed to thirty-five different, um, arborists and tree companies in the area, asking for them to help support us in getting word out to their clients that this is what needs to happen. So we hope that as the season comes around, that will be, um, something we can do effectively. And then there is one recommendation from the commission. It's, um, for pruning and removal at fourteen Cozine Street. Um, it's a little complicated, but I would ask for the village's, uh, approval, or make a motion to approve the commission's recommendations for fourteen Cozine Street.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Anything to add, I'm trying to smarten.
Yeah, I did just wanna let everybody know that, um, we are planning some birthday happenings. We wanna do a walking school bus, or maybe a biking school bus with the inauguration of the school district, um, on the day before our day, so that would be April twenty-first. Um, and then on Earth Day proper, we're talking about maybe doing like a village cleanup, where all people can volunteer and, um, and pick up trash. And, uh, one other thing I wanted to mention is regarding the village compost planning board process with the town. We are gonna be part of a public hearing on April third regarding that application. So if anybody's in favor or not on the compost facility, the proposed compost facility, please come to Town Hall, six P M, April third. And, uh, the, the materials are on the cloud, if anybody wants to see, um, all those planning board documents.
Your mortgage that you filed.
Yeah. And, uh, yeah, and then also, I'm happy to say that our compost committee member, Catherine Caleffer, we approved to send her to the New York State Organic Summit on April third. Um, I've actually been, uh, in contact with the summit organizers who might want to have to present better project at the summit. So that's exciting. And, uh, and then, of course, we also have, hopefully, we'll be getting past the winter weather and into spring. Um, and so our amphibian migration work will kick into action. And, um, I gave some texts to Sergeant Dunn for the big blinky board sign. So he's agreed to put that on Mount Rudson. So it's great, yeah.
Beware amphibian crossing?
Yeah, it'll say, go slow, amphibians crossing, volunteers on road this spring. And then I figured out how to draw a little frog face using.
My God, I can't wait.
Can we close the road as you did last time, can we close the road?
So we're handling it a little bit differently this year. Instead of trying to plan an event in advance when we don't know when the date's actually gonna be, um, we're just gonna give the police department a heads up when it looks like it's go time. And if they are available, they're gonna help out, and, um.
But the sign will be up there.
Signs are good, but the road will not be closed as it was the first time.
We don't close the road.
We never close a road fully.
Tell a road.
Um, the police were there to slow down traffic, yeah. So we, we've, we asked to close roads, but we got pushed back, saying that that might actually provoke, um, an opposition response. So we decided not to do that.
And we don't want them mad at the amphibians.
No.
Do they actually go on the same night, like to the, the sal, the new, the salamanders and the frogs, like, is it the same night?
Yeah, that's what, they call it big night, because that's kind of the way mother nature works, is when you have, uh, consistently, you have temperatures above forty degrees at night, and then it's like a, so it's like warm, it has to be a drizzly night. The amphibians all kind of like reach that threshold of temperature where it's go time. And, um, it's, it's, it's a party, because they're all going to find mates in the viral pools. So it's like a big hook up night. That's basically what it is. But with climate change, with climate change, the weather's become a lot more unpredictable. And, um, and so it's, we're curious, as we observe this year over year, and we're actually tracking the data of how many different species, and which areas, and how many. Um, we're curious to see if it becomes big nights, and does it end up confusing the critters?
Interesting, I wonder if any of it had to do with like if they all went at the same time, then it reduced, um, how many of them got eaten?
That's probably it too, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna continue. I already have, I already have a date for that one. Comprehensive plan.
Um, as always, all of the minutes are up on the website. And as many of you heard, um, lots of presentations are coming up, um, have, have come up from the subcommittees, and the main committee is now in discussions. Um, those meetings are happening fairly regularly these days. Um, the next one is next week on Thursday evening, starting at six.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at.
No, vacation violation.
Vacation violation.
Oh.
Vacation violation.
I don't have a party. Do I have that?
Yes, for a hundred hours for employee number twenty-two.
So moved.
I make a motion to approve the vacation violation?
What she said.
She can't, what she said? Lydia, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now I'd make a motion to adjourn at four seventeen. Thank you all for your patience in coming out on the second.
I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Honestly, we should have these during the day. They're short.